Good morning, everyone. I'm calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee. I'm joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Andrew Johnson, Quincy Goodman-Fry, and Paul Masano. We have two discussion items on our agenda for today. The first is a short presentation on city employee separation process. And our next presentation is a larger collaborative presentation on sex trafficking prevention plans for Super Bowl 52. So who is leading off from our city employee separation process?
Good morning, Chair Glidden, and members of the committee. My name is Rika Stannerson, and I'm here today representing the Human Resources Department. Today, I'm going to share with you the new and improved employee separation process. Also presenting with me will be Beth Cousins from our IT department. As you're aware, one of the city auditor findings from a recent report was that access to city systems are not being disabled in a timely manner when employees leave or retire from city employment. This is critical to address for many reasons and on many fronts. As workplace technology and systems have rapidly advanced over the last few years, so have the number of systems and electronic devices used by employees across the city. In addition, many departments have their own specific systems, equipment, and databases. This has made the process of terminating access from a central HR and IT perspective more challenging. The new separation process was created as a collaboration between HR, Finance, and IT, as well as the City Attorney's Office, who participated along with our labor union representatives on a sick and vacation policy work group that was formed to address the internal auditor findings. Our work group was charged with developing and implementing a new process to address the concerns raised in the report and report back to council. So how do city workers access or initiate the new separation process? The new process combines the content from several previously paper forms and combines them into a single online process using a secure self-service tool called ServiceNow that employees are already using for other purposes and requests involving human resources and IT-related services. The ServiceNow tool automates our workflow and the tasks necessary to ensure that all parties involved in functions related to separation from employment are notified of the appropriate dates and the systems and tools that need to be disabled. This process also creates an electronic record of all the actions taken, the approvals, the owners of the action, thus providing us an opportunity to review, track, and report on the steps needed to separate employees from city service and disable access in a timely manner. The IT service desk has been using ServiceNow for more than two years to automate IT-related requests. The icon is on all city employees' desktop. It's an orange face, which you see on the slide up there. The HR, we launched the HR ServiceNow portal just last month, and it's the green bubble that you see below that. That's the HR Service Center. As I said, these icons are on the desktops of all city computers, and they can also be accessed from mobile devices for those who don't have office computers. ServiceNow is very user-friendly and intuitive. The HR launch includes information and service requests related to all of our employee benefits and job classification requests. The separation process can now be accessed from either the IT or the HR Service Center The separation process can be initiated by anyone. It can be the employee separating from employment, the HR generalist in the department, or the supervisor. However, only the supervisor or the supervisors' designee can approve the details regarding the separation, which include the last day the employee is physically at work, the systems and devices used, the type of separation, whether it's voluntary or involuntary, and then approved use of sick, vacation, or comp time prior to separation. So all of the payroll details are then included in this process, so that payroll knows how to process the last paycheck. The supervisor's submission and approval then triggers the automatic sending of tasks to the appropriate resolvers behind the scenes who handle the work associated with separation. These tasks are many, as you can see from the workflow list, and they include the department reps, HR, the HRIS, or the HR Information Systems Staff, IT, and Finance payroll. Tasks are assigned to individuals involved, and to ensure timely response, our IT service desk will be able to follow up on a daily basis to ensure that assignments are done and closed out in the system. By tracking each step needed in the process, we will have accurate records to reference that all parties can access then on the back end. So now I'm going to turn it over to Beth Cousins, who will wrap up and discuss the implementation timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, councilmembers, I'm Beth Cousins, the Deputy Chief Information Officer for the city. So to summarize the improvements, we have one form that's easily accessible from the HR or IT portal. It's on all city computers. It's secure, so when workers authenticate to the city network, they're automatically known by the system. Additionally, supervisors approve the flow. We've automated the workflows, so the tasks get to the right people in HR, IT, and Finance. We have built-in approvals and notifications, again, so the right people know what actions they need to take. And we provide visibility to supervisors on the status of the request, so they'll know which of the many steps have been taken and when the activity has been, all activities have been completed. And importantly, we can do reporting, so that we don't have anything falling through the cracks. Oh, thank you, I forgot to do the slides. So the implementation timeframe, we'll be launching the new form next week on the Service Center portals for HR and IT. We are working with communications on messaging, so there'll be an article today in Minneapolis Matters. There'll be more next week at the time of the launch. And we are planning meetings with departments, so that we can make sure that we talk to every department, to make sure all supervisors know, and so that we can provide training. We are, HR is actively working to include instructions on this and the requirement for it at supervisor and manager training. Importantly, this process won't work if supervisors and managers don't use the system. We won't have a way of knowing that people are separated, so.
Any questions for Rika or me?
All right. Thank you very much. I'll just acknowledge, you know, thank you to Councilmember Masano, who I know has been tracking this on other audit reports, and I appreciate that there was a good team that worked together and that you acknowledged that teamwork that led to the product that you have now. So thank you to everyone. Anything? No? Yeah. Councilmember Masano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to commend the work done on this. This was multidisciplinary, and this did come from an audit. And, you know, some of these things aren't the most exciting pieces of work or pieces of policy that we look at as a council, but this is one way that the city is making major strides in professionalizing ourselves as an employer and really working to just be consistent, and therefore help, it helps us also to drive equity within our own city as an employer. So it does depend on supervisory compliance, and so I just want to say this is absolutely, needs to be an expectation, and we will all be better and we will be a better employer for it when we have a more consistent process as people both arrive at and choose to leave the city as an employee. So thank you so much to this team who did their work. They did a great and thorough job.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I'm not seeing any other comment from councilmembers, so I will move that we receive and file this item. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that item is concluded. Thank you to that team. Next, we have, I think Ms. Segal, if she's able to move forward, is going to help lead off our presentation on coordinated strategy to prevent and disrupt sex trafficking for the Super Bowl. Ms. Segal.
I am double-clicking, so hopefully it will open up here. We'll see.
And maybe if the clerk or someone can help her. There we go.
Ah, there we go.
And you know how to.
Which one is slideshow, then? I'm not used to this. Google whatever it is. Thank you. All right. We'll let Ken fix it. Thank you, Mr. Dollar. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Committee of the Whole for giving us time to speak today. I'm just very pleased and proud of the progress that's been made on this issue, since Sergeant Snyder, who you'll be hearing from next, was the lone investigator assigned to do this work to today, where statewide it has become a major issue, lots of criminal cases, lots of education, lots of training, the beginning of development of a real service network, housing, et cetera, for victims of sex trafficking. We are within the 100-day window countdown to the Super Bowl, and as the city and its partners thought about this, the Super Bowl is a great opportunity to really leverage ongoing work and to make sure that this work stays front and forward and focused going on into the future. This council, back in 2013, when it was a brand-new council for this four-year term, took a pledge on making progress on the issue of juvenile sex trafficking. And this work of the city on this really exhibits the best. We have worked collaboratively among different city departments, as well as other governmental agencies, and you'll hear from, a number of them here are nonprofit providers, as well as voices of survivors. And so you'll be hearing from Sergeant Snyder next, then Noah Schuckman from the City Regulatory Services Department, Lolite Mola, who is here from the Minnesota Women's Foundation, Amanda Kunch Mahari from Hanipin County, who is Hanipin County's No Wrong Door Coordinator, and then Beth Holter Ambrose, who is the Executive Director of the Link. And there's a lot of substance here, so if we're running long, just, you can just give the universal signal for moving it along. I know that there's a lot on your plate, but I'm going to turn it over now to Sergeant Snyder.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Sergeant Snyder.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the committee. It's a pleasure to stand before you again today and talk about something that has occupied such an enormous portion of my time over the last 18 months. And I got to tell you, it's with a high level of enthusiasm that I look forward to the waning days of January and the opening days of February. I think that this is a really, really great opportunity for us on a whole bunch of different levels, but I will tell you that one of the things that excites me most about this is it has given us an opportunity as a police department and as an organization around, a collaborative organization around human trafficking, to take a snapshot of how we feel about the most vulnerable that we come in contact with. And I'm not just talking about juveniles, even though so much of the conversation narrative over the past several years has been oriented around the suffering of juveniles, as it should be. But we have the opportunity here to really let people know where we stand on these. And so as I go through the next several slides and talking and being very concise is not one of my strengths, but I'm going to do the best that I can to keep this under a reasonable period of time. But I will tell you that as I go forward here, I want you to sort of cue in on the places where we've tried to make those intersections with making a statement and sort of taking a snapshot of how it is we feel about the people we serve. So there's two questions. When we started looking at this initiative about what we do about sex trafficking, that really sort of occupied our thoughts, and the first one was, what is it about the Super Bowl that's going to be different in terms of human trafficking? What are those places where we can apply pressure, where we can apply our ingenuity, where we can apply hard work that's going to make a big difference? And as the biggest single thing, and this is where we sort of have to separate from the national narrative, if you pay attention to some of the sources that have been circulating for the past several years, you would think about the Super Bowl as the largest human trafficking event anyplace in the world. Well, it simply isn't that way, and some real recent coverage and research by Dr. Lauren Martin has demonstrated that. Conversations that I've had with the last six Super Bowl holders and detectives and leadership from those teams provide evidence that what we're really talking about here is a sizable increase in demand. And because of that, that has really shaped how we are going to target the demand side of this while still making sure that we're doing our best to preserve and protect those among us who may be targeted as victims and survivors of human trafficking. The second question was how to best protect the vulnerable while interrupting trafficking activity. We can't ignore the connection between demand and victimization. Those two things are completely bound up. Our approach has to be bound up. We have to use a strategy that acknowledges both sides of that coin. So bearing those two questions in mind, we sort of articulate our mission, and the value of doing this was really to communicate with those people that are going to be serving on our team, so that we're all on the same page. Identification and recovery of victims of human trafficking, which has been from day one, that has been our primary objective. That has been the place where we're most interested and where we feel most called to serve the citizens of our community and of this region and even of the US. But we also recognize that in doing that, in protecting victims of human trafficking, a part of that is how we reach out into the marketplace, how we identify demand, and how we target those buyers, as well as those traffickers. A part of that is interrupting that human trafficking-related activity. This has a lot to do with our interaction in the marketplace, okay? Now, in Minnesota, we have a very robust online marketplace, like a lot of other cities do. And so this has taken a lot of creative thought. It's taken a lot of collaboration with survivors. It's taken a lot of work with advocates, as well as people from the tech fields and tech communities. I just came back from New Orleans, where I attended Shared Hope International, and they've got some real exciting stuff that some people who didn't even work in human trafficking have come up with, using bots to go out into the marketplace and actually have early contact with potential buyers of human trafficking victims. And so there's some real exciting stuff, and we're trying to get that here as part of our covert and ongoing strategy about how we're going to target people in the market. We've come up with a threefold operational strategy. Again, you're talking about law enforcement here, so we try and make these things as simple as possible. One-word responses typically work best. Our top-tier objective, of course, is to recover, and then interrupt, and then arrest. Now, arrest is not, in my mind, the way that we best measure our success, and it's been an ongoing discussion, not only in our department and with my bosses, and I have to apologize, I forgot to introduce them. That was my one objective. With us today is Lieutenant Nick Torberg, who's the commander of my unit. He's my lieutenant. And then Commander Troy Schoenberger, who is the commander of the Special Crimes Investigation Division, and they've both been instrumental in looking over our ongoing operations plan, helping to develop and set goals, and I just wanted to give them a big thanks for supporting this ongoing work. Our operational strategy targets three primary elements that are all taking place at the same time. The first one is the market presence. We recognize that in order for us to do an effective job of interdicting demand and an effective job of recovering victims, we have to have a robust and active and very effective presence in the marketplace. Now, our marketplace here on February 4th, 2018, and in the days leading up to that, is going to look very different than the marketplace did in Houston. It will not be, we don't believe, and this is from ongoing discussions with people, with advocates, people that provide services to victims, people that work in the community, we don't believe that we are going to have a huge increase in the street-level marketplace that exists out there. However, we have to be prepared to respond to that. So most of what we're going to be doing during this period of time is going to be focused on the online presence. Then we have to do broad deconfliction. How do you do that, and what does that mean? Deconfliction, of course, means that we are sharing information across jurisdictions. Now, in terms of the Super Bowl, because we already have a team that comprises somewhere around 15 different local agencies, all of whom are going to have representation among our team that's targeting, that's going to be working with us in the various operations, we're really concerned about those people from other places in the country that have intel and have information about victims that may be brought here. During the Houston Super Bowl last year, we were able to identify in four different occasions people that were going from Minnesota to Houston for the Super Bowl. And when I contacted the lieutenant down there early on, sometime in mid-January, and had a conversation with how they were collecting information, at that time, it appeared to me that there hadn't been a whole lot of forethought that had been given to, how are we going to get information and actually encourage intelligence coming from other agencies? One of the biggest ways that traffickers, we know, isolate victims in order to, you know, increase the coercion and things like that, is to move them from one place to another. And how better to do that than take them out of state? And so that really sort of colored my perspective and made it important for us to sort of have an upfront strategy in how we're going to get information from Atlanta, from Denver, from Dallas, from New York City, from New Jersey, wherever those victims might be, we want that information coming toward us. And then related to that is this idea of active intelligence. We have a number of different people involved in trafficking, in terms of both victims and traffickers themselves, that we track on social media. That creates a raw level of information that then we have to figure out how we're going to utilize that in our ongoing work. With regard to this idea of deconfliction, intel sharing, through a state grant, we were able to create the D-Stop portal. The D-Stop portal is something that Minneapolis Police controls, and it's something that we built to be able to do this process of deconfliction and sort of collecting all this intelligence into one place. This D-Stop portal solves our problem of how do we get information from people in Atlanta, or people in Denver, or people in Houston? And this provides them a means to be able to provide information to us, even if it's in the form of very, you know, cursory, incomplete, or undeveloped leads that we can then, that we can then work with. And so that portal has been incredibly successful in trial runs. We're actually holding a meeting later on in November where all of the local, there's 15 different agencies, have been invited to participate in it, and this is going to be what we believe will be the cornerstone of our deconfliction program around the state and hopefully around the region. With regard to the ongoing operations that we'll be a participant in, I want to make sure that everybody knows that a lot of planning has gone into this. We are trying to operate on this idea of muscle memory. So I went to Houston for the Super Bowl this year, and one of the real striking things that I brought back, one of the big takeaways, was there seemed to be very little practice upfront. I had no doubt that the teams had actually participated and worked with one another, but there seemed to be very little muscle memory about the individual operations. Well, the problem with that is that the time to plan is not while you're in the midst of a crisis or while you're developing an operation, while things are actually out there and you're in the field, and, you know, phone calls are being made, people are showing up, cars are pulling into the parking lot. That's a dynamic situation. We want to practice that upfront. And so for the last three years, we've been actually working on a couple of strategies that will form the cornerstone of how we approach this. The first one of those strategies, and this is our operational plan, I'm not going to really talk too much about this, but I just wanted to demonstrate that we do have a very structured hierarchy of how we're going to run these operations. And basically, for the purposes of our operational plan, there are going to be two tiers. There are going to be operational simultaneously every day. One of those is going to be our recovery and investigation tier, and the other is going to be what we would call our guardian operative tier, our guardian, guardian angels operational tier. And basically, guardian angels is our demand strategy, and some of you may have heard about that before. So we have our guardian angel strategy broken down into three different teams that will be operating, again, depending on what our identified operational hours are going to be. Right now, our rough operation period starts at about 0800 and goes till about 3:00 in the morning. We'll probably tweak that. We expect that those hours are going to change. This is where that sort of marketplace-embedded current intel is going to really be important for us in trying to make a decision about what time is our op going to start tomorrow? Where are we going to target this op? There's really no place in the metro area that's off-limits in terms of, everything is on the table for us, and we believe that we need to be flexible and very dynamic in approaching this. Guardian Angels, just so everybody knows, and you, again, many of you may have heard about this, we started this in February of 2014, and we started it at my desk with one ad, one decoy ad that we put up, and an idea that somehow we could hold buyers accountable in a way that we could charge them with felonies. And it was, it was a lot of learning. We made mistakes. We made missteps. There were conversations, sometimes heated with county attorneys, but we got a ton of support. We got a lot of support from the community. We got a lot of support from our partners. Over a period of the last three years, we've involved over 25 different local agencies in guardian angels, and we've involved seven different states, where we've provided technical assistance. We've participated in the building of a targeted software program that specifically provides us with the covert communication ability, as well as sort of our analytical ability to be able to identify potential buyers. It uses a number of different statutes to be able to target buyers of sex. The important thing about what we're doing here is that this is that marketplace-embedded piece, where we're in the market, we're identifying what's going on out there, and it takes full advantage of our best information about what that marketplace really looks like. One other piece about this that's really critical to understand is that this has been sort of the sharp end of the stick, if you will, about how we've gotten broad collaboration across other agencies. As you know, most of the other agencies around the metro don't have the benefit of having full-time staff 24/7 that'll work in human trafficking. So how do you get other agencies excited and involved? Well, one of the ways that you do that is by holding an operation, inviting people in, and showing them that this isn't rocket science. It's not something that's so unique and different from the skill set that they already possess. And in doing that, guardian angels has sort of given people the opportunity to test drive a little bit about what their own local strategy would look like and participate in something. And that's why, when I think about guardian angel, I think about how important it has been in our ability to reach across those jurisdictional boundaries and in some places, disciplinary boundaries. We've been able to involve advocates. We've been able to involve people that work in therapy, certainly probation and corrections, and even the faith-based community has played a role in how we approach demand in our communities. And that's why this is one of the really critical cornerstones of our approach. I'm not going to go through this, but just so that you understand that there's a very important workflow, guardian angels operates in the shadows by the benefit of our software, by our presence in the marketplace. It allows us to go into that marketplace posing as potential victim and interact with people that would be potential buyers. Now, the next piece of this, the next tier that I just want to introduce you to is our recovery tier, okay? As I mentioned to you earlier, recovery is always our top priority. I think that our success ultimately should be measured on recovery, and the important thing to remember about recovery is that one size doesn't fit all. We know that just because you make a recovery doesn't mean, in many cases, that the victim is going to leave the life. It doesn't mean that we're going to, that they are ultimately not going to, especially if they're an underage victim. By recovering them, we don't solve all of the problems that existed that created that vulnerability. Knowing that is really important, and it tells me that this gets to the whole procedural justice issue around what we do, and that we need to make sure that the investment that we're making in that process of recovery connects that victim with the necessary people, people to my right over here, that are going to step into that role and are frankly are going to play the biggest part in making sure that that victim gets what they need. When Beth, or Amanda, or any of the other people that work with survivors contact me at 3:00 in the morning, they know that I'm not going to be the best person to provide ongoing therapy. They are looking for me to do what only police can do, and that's why this partnership has been so important to me. I've learned a lot. They've taught me humility, whether you guys tried to or not, you did, but they've been able to help us sort of structure what our approach looks like. And so this recovery plan takes the best pieces of the information that they've given us over the course of the last five years and brings all of that to bear in answering the question of how best we can serve the most vulnerable. Now, one of the things I do want to talk about is this idea of undercover operations, and I want to be very, very clear that we are not going to put people, like I've seen done in the last six Super Bowls, where the objective is to get an offer. It's to get an offer of sex for money. It's to satisfy the elements of the crime. We're not going to do that. Why are we not going to do that? Because that's not our job at this particular point in time. Our job is to identify, to locate, and to provide them with the opportunity for services. Now, in the process of doing that, and this isn't new, we've been doing this for a long time. This is our operational plan. We don't need to put an undercover officer in an interaction where we get an offer of sex for money and, again, thereby meeting the elements of the crime. There's always another way to do that. And frankly, if you ask me to do that, I'm going to recommend against it, because I don't think that's the best way. think that's the best way for us to approach an ongoing relationship. And hopefully Beth will talk a little bit about that when she gets up here. She's smiling, so she probably will. Our recovery strategy and plan also brings into bear this idea about sort of technical expertise. And this is another place where our partnerships with IT in Minneapolis and, you know, all these other parts of the technology industry have helped us to be able to identify, to locate, to figure out where the victims are and figure out the best way that we can recover them. Okay, and I apologize, I'm going to skip over this slide because there's really not too much that I want to say here, except to say that this is sort of a summary of what I just talked about with regard to those community assets and that we fully expect that many of the recoveries that we're going to make are going to lead to casework that we're going to have to follow up on, which is one of the reasons why we structured individual teams, each of which will operate autonomously and independently under the guidance and direction of their supervisor, but will be able to follow that case through. This is our recovery workflow. Again, recovery is basically about three-quarters covert, where we're working to identify, locate, communicate, and then recover and engage. Just real quickly with regard to the still things, the list of things that I still need to work on or that I still want to do because I want to leave you with the sense that this is still an evolving, dynamic situation. We've got a lot of ongoing planning and training, planning and collaboration that we're working on. Our expansion of the D-Stop, which will be satisfied by the end of November. Our ongoing testing of operational strategies. This is that sort of dynamic marketplace embedded, what does trafficking look like today? And what it looks like right now in Minneapolis is different than it's going to look like on January 27th of 2018. And so, it's important we have a sense of that. And then integration of community-based input and how the community members, the people that are most likely to have that early contact and communication. So, that relationship building is not only something we focused on right now and will continue to do, but it's something that we're really going to be pushing during our operational period. And I will end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Snyder. I'm not seeing immediate questions, and I'll just note there are several other presentations, but just want to say, wow, I mean, just kind of the depth and sophistication of the plan that the Minneapolis Police Department has invested in. And I know that you have really taken this on as sort of a passion project, but it has been Police Department Administration that has ended up also supporting the work. And so, I just want to say thank you to them. It's just very impressive, the approach and also the way that MPD approaches this as very integrated work with community, with partners, and also with all of the other jurisdictions around. So, I just wanted to say that. There may be other comments later, but thank you so much. I've heard you present other times before, and again, you just are very impressive. Thank you, Sergeant Snyder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate those comments.
Madam Chair, Committee Members, Noah Shuckland, Director of Regulatory Services. Just to give you a quick summary of the training work that we're doing with staff, given our role going into rental properties, both with the rental licensing program and inspections, and then also actually our animal control program is in homes very frequently as well, and then with our traffic control field staff. We are in the middle of putting together training for this December for our staff, working with Sergeant Snyder. And we have a follow-up training on one that we did in December of 2015 as well, and that is to give staff tools to identify what to look for and then how to deal with that and who to talk to. So, gives them an understanding to not directly intervene unless there's an immediate danger, but to work with Minneapolis Police to go out and address situations as they arise. And so, we'll be sending staff through that program and hope to expand that to other city divisions that are interested. I'll also note, just in light of the recent passage of the short-term rental ordinance, that we are working to have a piece of, a one-pager that we can send out to short-term rental property owners as well, so that they're able to also look for potential issues in their homes or in the units that they're renting. And then I know that CPED staff were not able to be here, and so, I'll just quickly note that business licensing also is doing a refresher training for their staff and that they're working to distribute information to all licensed businesses in the city to let them know of what to look for as well. So, unless there's a question, I will get out of your way.
Right. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. And indeed, thank you so much, Sergeant Snyder, for the remarkable work that your team is leading. My name is Lulit Mola from the Women's Foundation of Minnesota, and I am really here to set some context for you and bring you deeper into this work because it really is a movement of strong partners that are part of a coalition and deeply committed to creating a Minnesota where girls and women and all people are safe and live prosperous lives as we all deserve. So, the Women's Foundation Minnesota is a community foundation statewide, and we have invested in combating sex trafficking specifically for minors through our Minnesota Girls Are Not For Sale campaign. We are in the sixth year of that campaign, and it really started back in 2010 when folks on the ground, like Grant and our own grantee partners, informed us that there was an escalating threat to young girls and safety, which was sex trafficking. Children were coming before the bench and were treated as criminals and charged as prostitutes instead of victims. So, here in front of you, you have some partners in this fight against trafficking. Again, various sectors, right, all deeply committed. And I would really like to highlight that our progress in Minnesota is really remarkable. And I know Grant mentioned that he has visited other cities. We have a model here in Minnesota that both federal government and other states look after as they create their own efforts to combat sex trafficking in their state. So, in six years, we have catalyzed a sea change. We've taken a systems change approach called the Minnesota Model, and we have really worked with law enforcement, governments, service providers, private businesses, and others to provide victims of sex trafficking trauma-centered care instead of criminalizing them. So, you can see in front of you all of the progress that we've made at the Women's Foundation. We've awarded over 100 grants to projects and services that combat this work. We have also passed some policy. So, Minnesota is the first state in the nation to dedicate state dollars to combating sex trafficking. So, we went from $0 in 2011 to $13 million as of May of this year. We've also passed the Safe Harbor Law, which Beth can speak to beautifully, that sees victims as victims and not as criminals, and expands housing and services for people that have been trafficked in this industry up to age 24. We've increased the number of beds available from two in 2011 to 48 beds in 2016. Again, I really just want to highlight the partnership, right, from both St. Paul, Minneapolis, and other cities and towns in Minnesota. We've trained and assisted law enforcement in their prosecutions, as you've heard slightly. We funded research to end the demand. I even have with me here, mapping the market, a new research that has just come out. So, it's really not just intervening when the work has already been done, but it really looking at prevention models. Who is buying sex, right? What are their reasons? Where is it happening? And this research is now available, and we have copies for you if you're interested. We've also educated media partners. There's a great difference in identifying trafficked victims as prostitutes versus victims. So, really mobilizing the public to really get behind this. And this is all to say, as it has been stated, that sex trafficking isn't an event that happens with the Super Bowl. It happens every day. It's been going on. And our work as a collective partnership, a movement, has been happening for years. We are proud to co-chair the Super Bowl Anti-Sex Trafficking Committee along with Ramsey in Hennepin County. And Amanda will speak more about this, but it's really, again, taking all of the work that we have been doing cross-sector collaboratively and leveraging this high-profile event to bring more resources and more attention to ending sex trafficking in our state. We will speak to this shortly. We also have some prevention campaigns out there, including the I Am Priceless campaign, which you'll hear more about, and the Don't Buy It Project, which is specifically targeted at men, to say that not only do you have a role in perpetuating violence against women and girls, but you also have a role in stepping in and preventing it from happening. So, I am happy and I am honored here to stand on behalf of the Women's Foundation of Minnesota to really say that none of this could have been done alone. We work in such strong partnerships, and we are honored to be in this work and to make sure that it continues to go on beyond the Super Bowl and to let the public know that we have been committed before, we are committed now, and we'll always be committed to ensuring a safe and prosperous state for women and girls and all people in Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The Women's Foundation really has been a tremendous partner. So, I just want to say special thank you and special partner to the city of Minneapolis too. So, we really appreciate that. I'm not sure who is next, and all right, come on up, please. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. How was everybody today? Good. Thanks for having me. So, my name is Amanda Kunchbuhari, and I'm with Hennepin County. As Susan introduced me, I oversee our No Wrong Door Plan at Hennepin County, and I'd be happy to share more about that later after the presentation. But I really want to talk to you today about what we've been doing as a committee. As Lulit mentioned, it has been formed for a while now, and it's being co-chaired by several folks. And when we started, we started over a year ago. So, we have been doing this work since July of 2016, which I'm really happy to say. And I think that really sets us apart in Minnesota because we've been planning for so long. And you can see the leadership folks there, including myself, and happy to have been doing this work. And we have grown significantly in our efforts. So, since we started, we had a couple of folks involved, a couple of organizations, and I'm happy to say that we have grown kind of hugely. And so, we have 80-plus people who are actually involved in the work and 40-plus organizations, and we represent all of the various sectors that are listed there. Some of our key messages that I want to highlight, and Lulit kind of alluded to this with the mapping the demand research that was put out by the University of Minnesota, Dr. Lauren Martin, and really looking at, you know, this issue is something that's happening 365 days a year. And that has been a key message of ours. We think it's really important, and I think Sergeant Snyder also pointed this out in the beginning of his presentation. Thank you. But we really are trying to get that word out, that we don't want folks just engage in this point in time, but we want folks here fighting this, you know, horrendous crime all the time, every day of the year. We also want to use this as an opportunity to kind of leverage the issue and debunk any myths that are out there and really educate the public about what is happening in our local community. We also want to be able to create a replicable model, something that other jurisdictions can use, other states can use, so that they're not starting from scratch and they have something to build from. A couple of our goals, as I talked a little bit about, so we really want to focus on, again, public awareness. How do we increase that around the issue? How do we prevent and disrupt the buying and selling of sex? And you heard that from law enforcement's plan. We want to look at how do we provide services to victims? And so, Beth will really highlight what that plan is looking like. And again, the replicable model is something that we really are pushing forward. So, since the inception of the committee, we went through some strategic planning and came up with some different areas of focus that you can see. So, the structure is we have the co-chairs, and then we have leads who are leading all of those different seven areas of focus for us. And I'll kind of go into each one and give you more detail about what's happening to give you a comprehensive look at the work we've been doing. So, our business response plan, we are really happy that we have the private sector very involved and engaged in this issue, and that we are really looking at how do we leverage those folks to get the message out there about this issue, to get them engaged, but to also do some fundraising too. So, we have a plan in place, and it costs a lot of money to implement that plan. I'm really looking at our private sector partners to help support that because there are funding gaps that we have. And one kind of neat thing that I do like to share when I talk about the work we've been doing is that Mayo Clinic is developing a gift registry, and that, and maybe Beth can talk a little more about it because they'll be impacted by this, but we're looking at launching that in early December for the general public and employers to use with their employees. And essentially, you can donate items to different shelters. So, you can donate clothing items or other items that youth may need when they enter shelters as well as adults. So, look for that. You'll see information coming out soon. Our service provider response, so I won't get into details because Beth will really do a better job of talking about this as they've been leading it, but I do want to just highlight that we have had a really big collaborative effort, and we've had providers from, who are serving youth but are also serving adults that have been a part of this. So, I think that really does set us apart as a state, and we've been very kind of inclusive in wanting to include everybody. And so, Beth will talk about it, but those are some of the key components that we've included in that plan. And then communications has really been a big part of what we're doing as well. It kind of promotes the public awareness in debunking myths. And one of the campaigns that we are happy to kind of formally endorse as a committee is the I Am Priceless campaign. And again, Beth will talk about this because her organization is really the one who's led the creation of this, and they've done it with their Youth Advisory Board. So, I won't go into detail, but I will say, just acknowledge that the Women's Foundation has funded this campaign as well as the next one that I will talk about. And the development of these campaigns started way before the Super Bowl committee even began. So, the campaign of Don't Buy It Project, there's a wonderful organization that's based out in Duluth called Men is Peacemakers, and they developed this curriculum. It's really targeted towards men, so looking at that demand piece and looking at men over 18 and putting out the message that, you know, don't believe the myths that this is a victimless crime, that there are no repercussions for your actions, and that you don't have a role to play. And like Lulit said, we have to engage men in this work. We know that men are also victimized, so we do want to highlight that. But we know that they have a huge role in trying to go against our cultural kind of stigmas around toxic masculinity and gender-based violence and really wanting to kind of catalyze their power in changing the culture and shifting it. And then we have a bunch of donated media too, so we're happy that our partners with Clear Channel, iHeartRadio are supporting the work and really getting the campaigns out there. But we're limited also in the donated media. It doesn't cover everything, and so, a lot of our plan is focused on how do we get the word out in other media channels as well. And then we have a government partners committee, and this committee is supported by the Governor's Office. We actually had a meeting a couple of weeks ago over at the Capitol, and we invited a bunch of our state partners, state agencies and their communications folks to really talk to them about how can they engage in this work and utilizing their constituents and their community to get the word out there. So, as you can see, we're looking at how do we get some footers on their newsletters as a tangible way to engage them in this work and to get the word out again about those two campaigns that we've endorsed. With this too, actually, I do want to highlight that we are looking at ways to engage our elected officials. So, we're developing a newsletter that we can send out soon, I would hope, and hopefully we can share that with you all as well to get out to your constituents. So, that's another piece of this. And then training. So, I have the pleasure of leading up this committee with one of the member, somebody who works for the city of Minneapolis, Nigel Perro. He's in the Public Health Department. Nigel is wonderful, so it's been really good to work with him. And we're really looking at how do we get the word out to some of the other industries that are listed here that may not have done a lot of work around this. What we're actually finding, which is really humbling, is that a lot of these industries do have trainings. You know, Uber in particular, they actually have a robust set of trainings around this issue. And so, we're learning a lot and want to be able to share that information with other folks as well. And so, a couple of key deliverables that I do want to highlight with this work, based on our timing and our capacity, are really looking at how do we develop a resource guide so that we are listing, not necessarily services that are out there, but listing trainings that are out there and available? Nothing like that exists- Nothing like that exists right now, and we want to be able to share that information with our partners and with the public. So if somebody from the transportation industry needs a training for their staff, they know where to go and they know how to access those resources. And once we develop that, we're hoping it will be done, I would say, end of November. We want to share that with all of our state partners and other organizations so they can put that up on their site. We're also looking at hosting a training for medical professionals. So Mayo Clinic, Regions Hospital, and the Advocates for Human Rights are looking at putting that together right now. And that, unfortunately, due to scheduling of a lot of medical professionals, probably won't happen until after Super Bowl, but it is something that is going to be happening soon. And then we also want to look at developing an online interactive training. And this training will serve two purposes. The first one is for the 10,000 volunteers. We have an opportunity to train them, and this will be one way to do that. We also want to make this training available to the public so that they also, again, understand the issue, know what some of the myths are and can kind of debunk those. And then they can get the word out to their friends and families and members in their communities. We have a faith-based community or subcommittee as well. And so they're really looking at developing a response plan that we can use within various faith-based communities and also looking at how do we do this work while being inclusive, right? So not just focusing on Christian-oriented, faith-based community groups, but also looking at expanding that to other faith-based community groups, too. We have a child protection response. So as an employee of Hennepin County, that has been a really big response for us internally. And I'm happy to say that we have the support of the Department of Human Services. They have hired somebody over there who is leading up this work. And really, as you can see, the two kind of main goals of the committee are to ensure that we have a coordinated response from child protection before, during, and after Super Bowl. And I think that will be a huge benefit to our state on a long-term scale. And then ways to get involved. So we get this question a lot. If people have questions or want to get involved, they can definitely reach out to one of us who are doing this work, too. But we also think raising funds is a huge way to support it. As I said, the plan costs a lot of money and we have received some funding so far, but we also still have a great need for that. And you'll hear more about the service provider response. That costs money to have folks doing that work and being out there and being responsive 24/7. Also, holding trainings. So again, getting the word out there, educating the public. If anybody's interested, we would be happy to direct you in the appropriate place or get somebody out to do trainings for your staff. And then promoting the campaigns that we have. So again, once we get the newsletter or we get the footers, getting that information out there is going to be really helpful. And then talking to the community. So everything that you heard here today and everybody that is in this room, if you're able to get the word out about what we're doing and about some of the things that we talked about, that this is happening 365 days a year, that we need folks involved beyond Super Bowl and that we are looking at how to make this work sustainable. We would really, really appreciate that. And then the other piece, too, if you have further questions, feel free to go onto the Minnesota Girls Are Not For Sale site. There's a lot of information there and you can get plugged into the work also from that point as well. So that is it for me. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee for having me here today and to be a part of this. It's a little bit nerve-wracking to go after someone you respected partners. I do have to say, I want to really thank Chair Glidden, as well as Susan Segal, Coral Garner from the city who's here, as well as Lisa Goodman and Jacob Frye, who have longtime supported youth experiencing homelessness, youth aging out of the foster care, juvenile justice system, and youth experiencing sexual exploitation because we really appreciate your support and hope to keep that support. So I am here today to talk a little bit about the services side. So I'm from an organization called The Link. And I won't, due to time, I won't go into too much about The Link, but I will. This is one of our sites located down the street on Glenwood. We also have a site, actually, in the basement of this building called the Juvenile Supervision Center, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. We were started in 1991 by two Minnesota former Vikings players, Jim Marshall and Oscar Reed, in North Minneapolis to basically respond to young people who are getting victimized by crime, who are engaging in crime, and who are experiencing homelessness. The two of them started the organization in a very grassroots way on the north side. And to this day now, we've expanded from them to volunteering their time graciously to 164 staff. We also are a youth and adult-led organization, which is a little bit different than most nonprofits. So we have a traditional board of directors that has former youth on our actual traditional board. And then we also have four youth advisory committees that are made up of youth from our programs that have lived experience of juvenile justice involvement, involvement with sex trafficking and/or the experience of homelessness. And those young people helped to design all of our programming, including our input into the Super Bowl plan. We also, like I said, have a mission, which is The Link works with youth and families to restore the impacts of poverty and social injustice. So to get more into the actual service response for the Super Bowl, what I will say is we have an amazing group of providers that are providing services here locally in Minneapolis already, in the West Metro and actually throughout the Twin Cities. So we didn't want to create something entirely new. We wanted to build on what we know works, what the youth and the adults that are in the life are seeing works, and really work with those partners that are already doing the work to be able to expand what we're doing for the 10 days of the Super Bowl and hopefully beyond. Because frankly, it goes on every day. And none of us have the capacity to serve everyone that needs help. So we're really encouraged and excited about this opportunity to be able to increase the response because we feel like we need it today or any day. We also are working on focusing on front-end services for the 10 days of the Super Bowl. It takes, we all are very supportive of housing, but to house a young person or an adult takes much longer than 10 days. So we're focusing on front-end services, meaning street outreach, drop-in centers. We're partnering, we do currently partner with law enforcement, especially Sergeant Schneider, who's been very transformative in his leadership and his way of working with exploited youth and adults. And we truly appreciate him leading this work and partnering with him. And also increasing our emergency shelter beds. Also, our approach is very inclusive of all aspects of diversity. We know that girls are oftentimes most talked about as being victims of trafficking, but we also work with boys. We see boys who are victims of sex trafficking at The Link along with girls. We also see youth that are non-gender conforming and youth that are transgender. So we're inclusive of all of those populations, as well as any racial background and sexual orientation. This is a list of the other organizations. So I'm here on behalf of The Link, but I have many incredible partners in this work. And so I don't want for anyone to think it's The Link that does this alone. Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center is a great partner. The Family Partnership and Breaking Free and MIWRC are going to be focusing more on adults. We currently partner with them and we will throughout the Super Bowl. Youth Link as well, the Street Works Collaborative, Cornerstone, The Source, and Oasis. And then, of course, Hennepin County Child Welfare. We also, of course, get great support from the Women's Foundation, as well as Hennepin and Ramsey County, and the Business and Communications Subcommittee of the Anti-Trafficking Committee. So to talk a little bit about Street Works, and this is actually how I started my career. So I love, I love street outreach. So Street Works, we are working with, we have a great collaborative in the Twin Cities already called the Street Works Collaborative. And so it's a way for all youth outreach workers to be trained in the same way, to join forces, to partner with each other, to make sure that we're scheduling ourselves appropriately across the Twin Cities. So we are working together with Street Works to have specialized teams for street outreach workers for trafficked youth right now and then also during the Super Bowl and beyond. And we'll also be partnering with adult providers of outreach, Breaking Free, MIWRC, and Pride. So we are coordinating our schedule for the 10 days of the Super Bowl. We're going to be putting more teams of outreach workers out onto the streets and/or sites because it'll be pretty cold. So we're thinking some of this will be, outreach will be done indoors as well. And then we also have a Juvenile Supervision Center, actually like downstairs in the basement of this building, like I said, which is open 24 hours a day already. And The Link operates that in partnership with the city of Minneapolis, Hennepin County, and the Minneapolis Public Schools. And it's a place where any youth between the ages of 10 and 17 can get dropped off for low-level or status offenses, felony car theft, or who have been suspected of being sexually exploited. And then we provide a trauma-informed, strength-based approach with, working with that young person. So that'll be available during the Super Bowl as well. And then we also plan on having additional staff support and availability of support through not just The Link, but The Source, Youth Link, Street Works, other organizations to partner with law enforcement so that as they're recovering victims, we're able to get them connected with the services and support they need, as well as shelter and housing. And we'll take direction, of course, from Sergeant Snyder and others on the police department with that. So that will be very helpful. We also have drop-in center and shelter response as well. And so what we're working on is increasing the hours of existing drop-in centers, which are locations, they're sort of like a one-stop shop where youth or adults can get connected with multiple services in one place. So we're very fortunate to have Youth Link right down here, which has a wonderful opportunity center. We're one of the many partners with that. And so they will be expanding hours for 18- to 24-year-olds during the 10 days of the Super Bowl. Minors, like I said, were already open at the Juvenile Supervision Center down in the basement. And then also Breaking Free will be working on opening a drop-in center for adults. In terms of additional shelter beds, so this is for minors. It is not necessarily easy to increase the number of shelter beds. We go through a state licensing process. So we've started the process of requesting a waiver for the 10 days to add in to our passageways emergency shelter for sexually exploited youth to add, to go from six beds to 12 beds. So we're in that process. And then Breaking Free is also in the process of adding additional emergency shelter units for adults. And we did want to mention that this campaign called I Am Priceless. So I think what's really unique is, I said, that The Link is a youth and adult-led organization. And so much of our programs, as well as this campaign, was designed by youth who have been sex trafficked, talking to their younger selves, basically, or their peers that are between the ages of 10 and 14, who are most at risk of being sexually exploited, runaway youth, youth experiencing homelessness, youth within the systems of care. And what their approach is, and it's actually their voices used and they designed all the creative, and then Knack took their designs and made it happen, which is amazing. And the funding came to pay those youth who have been trafficked to do this campaign from the Women's Foundation. So we greatly appreciate that. So what we'd like to do is kind of highlight this. This campaign was much needed way before we even knew the Super Bowl was coming to town. But what happened with the engagement of the Super Bowl coming to town, it created this amazing opportunity to get this campaign out in a way broader way than The Link could have ever done, I mean, ever done or had access to. So we really appreciate that. And then also our partners up in Duluth, which were mentioned before, Men is Peacemakers are going on the other side of it. So we're working on preventing with the youth, they're working on preventing with the demand side, with the buyers. So they've got it really well. And I think, do I have time to do one quick video, 30 seconds? Oh, sorry. Okay, no problem. Okay. Okay. Sure, okay. So we'll just end with this. This is a great way to end.
I am not alone. I am worthy of respect. I am my own hero, and my body belongs to me. I am priceless.
There is a way out of sexual exploitation. For help, call or text (612) 232-5428, or visit thelinkmn.org.
So with that, I'll end. And thank you so much for having us here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all of your work. We did have a question or comment from Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't have a grasp on the problem of sex trafficking in our community before I came to City Hall. Since then, and thanks to your welcoming me as a part of the sex trafficking work group, I've been engaged in seeing research and operations and prevention and this really coordinated effort with members of our city and our county and foundations and also the public. If there's a message or a sentiment to be sent from Minneapolis around this coming Super Bowl, it's that sex trafficking isn't welcome here. I'm painfully aware that this is an issue that faces our city, not just during major events. And I just really appreciate all the efforts to highlight this issue during the Super Bowl. The planning meetings that we've been part of have given me confidence that this difficult topic is being handled with thoughtful attention to the experiences of victims and how we also discourage perpetrators. People coming to our city with the intent to purchase sex from vulnerable people should fear Sergeant Snyder. And he's not a lone ranger. He's built a full-scale operation around it, one that involves Commander Schoenberger, that also previously involved Commander Falcons. And it's impressive. We hold important and dear all of these community partners and legislators in this kind of an effort with the Safe Harbor work that we've gotten accomplished in Minnesota. And I just want to say, we look to educate the public and the world that our community is really organized here. So I'm encouraged that these efforts are being targeted towards long-term work as we know that this won't disappear once football crowds have left. And our message for anyone who thinks that they can come for the Super Bowl and engage in sex trafficking is you will be caught, you will be prosecuted, you will be sorry. Stay home. For women and children who've fallen into this nightmare, we have a lot of support here, really compassionate support. And for people that want to help, I think this presentation and the organizational leaders are here to engage you, they're here to harness your energy in the most productive way. And that can be ongoing. So thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I'm not seeing other comments from Councilmember, I always say that, and then Councilmember Gordon. But that's my flag.
Yep, and I won't take very long. I just kind of wanted to throw out there how fantastic it is that everybody's getting together to talk about this and coordinate and focus on it now. And I just want us to keep that together and that energy together after the Super Bowl as we go forward so we can really make headway and eliminate this problem altogether. So let's remember all the learnings we're doing now and keep it going.
So Councilmember Gordon, I actually just want to correct something you just said, which is that I think part of the point that we were making here is that there has been a large collaborative group of work happening in advance, well, in advance of the Super Bowl activities. But the Super Bowl kind of presented a special opportunity to bring on new partners, new attention, and new funding to this. And also, I think, kind of new ways that, because of such the largest of the event, that we increase our interaction with other jurisdictions and kind of that sort of a thing. So I think it's more that this gives an extra platform to augment the work that has been happening. You know, I appreciate that there was mention made of Minnesota being a model. This is the Safe Harbors work. This is the work that kind of just has been building and building and building. I really appreciate that. And so I just, maybe I misinterpreted your comment.
Well, Madam Chair, I don't want to deny that. And Public Safety Committee's heard these reports for years now and how we have been a role model and a shining star. But I like the way that you said, new partners, new funding, new focus. And that's what I'm talking about, is that I think this will give us a, it has given us a little bit of a bump up on what was already an amazing system and perspective. And if just if you looked at the legislation that we've been able to get passed and the funding already and the whole focus, refocusing of the, I think, the whole approach to it, even before this has been amazing. But let's keep it going is all.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate that. And I guess the last thing I'll just say is I appreciate that there were some specific asks that were put out there. I do hear every now and then from community members, individuals, and groups about how can I plug in? How can I help? And it looks like you're really putting together some opportunities as well as just putting it out there that the bigger the effort it can be, it depends on some of the additional investment that we're still looking for. And so thank you for that. With that, we have concluded with this presentation. And so I'll just move to receive and file this. On approval, say aye. Aye, opposed. And thank you very much to the team that put all of this together. Thanks for your partnership. We appreciate it. We will move on. We have some committee reports. And we can be, well, give what you think is important. So Councilmember Goodman with Community Development and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There'll be 14 items that we'll bring forward for approval on Friday. It's notable that Items 1, 2, and 3 are all PACE programs, which is, probably brings us up to about a dozen clean energy PACE financing projects. Item number 4 is a bond issuance, 5 is an extended hours license, and 6 is a new business license. Item 7, same thing. And 8 is a license revocation due to failure to pay taxes. 9 are the regular liquor business and gambling licenses. 10 are some changes to our Great Streets program categories. Item 11 is probably the most notable item. This is the project recommendations for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And item 13, which is- for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And Item 13, which is the largest item based on money, is the reservation for our 2018 low-income housing tax credits to two projects, both in the second ward, Aon Prospect Park and Maya Commons. So, with, and then Item 13 is a policy change with regard to signs in front of vacant properties. And 14 is some contract amendments. I'm happy to answer questions on any of those items.
Thank you. I'm not seeing questions. Next, Councilmember Gordon with Health, Environment and Community Engagement.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment and Community Engagement Committee will bring forward four items for consideration on Friday. The first is just a correction to the terms of our public health appointment of one appointee, Raymond Boyle. The second item's authorizing acceptance of a grant from the National Mero Donor Program. Third item is a resolution declaring support for the city of Minneapolis to sign on to the Milan Urban Food Policy Pact. And the fourth item is some staff directions regarding our blueprint for powering Minneapolis municipal operations with 100% renewable energy. We're directing staff to study, looking at contracting with a third-party wind farm development. Then we also directed staff to go out for bid on solar garden subscriptions for the remaining approved amount of kilowatt-hours, 4.5, that we authorized originally. I can answer any questions on any of those items?
All right. Thank you. There is no report from Intergovernmental Relations. Next, Public Safety, Civil Rights and Emergency Management with the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam.
Councilmember Gordon.
Chair, ready to go ahead with that as well. There are seven items that Public Safety, Civil Rights and Emergency Management will be bringing forward. One is a gift acceptance from John Jay College for Smart on Crime Innovations Conference travel expenses. Second item's authorizing the Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grant Award Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice. Third item is authorizing an increase to a contract we have with Trans Languages for Language Translation Services. Fourth item is authorizing acceptance of a grant from U.S. Bancorp for $20,000 for the purchase of security video cameras along East Lake Street. Fifth item is a contract with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for Section 8 Housing Voucher Program. And this is an agreement for the Police Department to participate in a federally funded program. Sixth item's authorizing a contract with the Department of Veterans Affairs for fire suppression and emergency services. And the final item is a staff direction regarding hiring two-body camera analysts. We've just directed staff to begin that hiring process so that we can get our analysts hired as soon as possible. I'm happy to answer any questions on those items.
Thank you. Next, Transportation, Public Works. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be 49 items, most of which are standard activities of the department. Two items are a little different. Item 2 is a large body of work that's been taking place over many years where we divide the responsibilities between the Public Works Director and the City Engineer. Lots of work done, but the summary would just best be summed up as administrative work will go to the Director and technical work will go to the trained engineer. And then the other item, which is Item 9, which is 2017 Minneapolis Open Streets, there'll be an eighth open street event in 2017 that'll be held along the Nicklet Mall from Fifth Street to Grand Street and then Grand Street to Lorian Park. And that will be December 16th. So, that'll be our first winter open streets. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Ways and Means. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means will bring forward six items for consideration on Friday. The first is a grant acceptance from several agencies, a little over $325,000 for prosecutorial services to crime victims. We're also having, accepting low responsive bids for three various projects. One is the frontline warning systems for outdoor warning sirens, also messenger construction at the Convention Center and Ebert construction for the, under the freeway impound lot improvement projects. We also have the third-quarter gift and donation acceptance resolution. And the final item will be a contract amendment with Granicus for the SWIFT 911 Rapid Notification System. Happy to answer any questions on those six items.
Great. Thank you. And last, we have Sunday Planning with Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had two items that we're bringing forward, an alley vacation and a vacation resolution. Correction, I'll stand for any questions.
All right. With that, I believe we've concluded with our business for today and we are adjourned. Thank you.